Katie?
Yes.
All meeting order, roll call please.
Donahue?
Here.
McKnight?
Here.
Roa?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Sterns?
Here. Pledge of allegiance if you're able to stand still standing.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
If you have a cell phone, iPad, iWatch, your device, if you can mute it, appreciate that. I will try to remind you at the end of the meeting, but don't count on it. I forgot to do that in a very thin. Okay, I don't have anybody on Katie's line, on public phone and on the agenda. All right, Gary, if you want to give us an update on the disaster emergency update?
Right, we're still operating under the same emergency declaration we have for the past thirteen, well thirteen months. No update on that. Again, cases continue to be reported. And just to note, the vaccinations, of course, are open to any adult in the state now. So anyone that wants a vaccination can get one now, so.
Do they apply on, does a community medical center have it online, or how do they?
I believe so, but I'd have to get more information before I give anything out on that one. I don't want to lead anyone astray.
Sounds good. Anything else? Any questions for Gary? We'll move on to executive session meetings. Katie?
Your Honor, an executive session was held on April 7th, 2021 to discuss real estate litigation and personnel. And an executive session was held at 5:00 today to discuss personnel.
Thank you. Motion to approve, motion approved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Hi. Katie, we have a number of communications that were sent to council. Would you read them to me, please, or read them to us?
Your Honor, the first is from Andy Schreckengoss. Mr. Schreckengoss states that the intent of his letter is to express an idea which will benefit the city of Leadville. He believes that the community, we could spend more time formally recognizing individuals of good character. He said he grew up in Leadville and had the privilege of being taught and cared for by Officer Johnny Foster. He said not only did Officer Foster provide over 26 years of public service to Leadville, he was the first African-American police officer to serve in Leadville. He is requesting to address council to better illustrate the idea of a memorial for Officer Foster. He said he doesn't desire anything monetarily and is working with the Foster family on what would be designed and constructed. He would like something in Diamond Park. And beyond that, the idea leaves room for a scholarship in his name. He asks council to consider the idea and he thanks each of you for your tireless efforts as you lead and administer local government.
Thank you. Second one?
The second one is from Gina Chatfield. She is writing to request consideration of a memorial tribute to Ted Watts, who recently passed away due to COVID-19. She said she worked for Ted for many years and witnessed his love and pride in the city of Leadville. She's hoping that council will consider allowing the ceremonial renaming of a portion of East Cherry Alley that runs from Park Avenue to Diamond Park. Ted Watts way. She says several former colleagues have expressed their willingness to be part of this venture and they're happy to provide funding for the memorial signage should you, should council approve it. The hope is to make the memorial presentation during the traditional week of the Thurston Classic in June. And she has attached written statements from those in support of the memorial remating.
Steve?
This letter is from Timothy Scott, the auxiliary police captain. He is writing out of concern for the possible loss of Leadville City Police Dispatchers. He said the Leadville Auxiliary Police currently serve the city of Leadville through assistance they provide to the police department, fire department, and public works. He says the dispatchers are their lifeline when they're responding to emergency situations as well as community functions. The constant line of communication between the auxiliary police and the police department is absolutely vital to the safety of both the APs and the community. He says without the dispatchers providing these services, he cannot guarantee the continued success of the organization. He said the auxiliary police will have a longer response time. And he's concerned for the safety of members while performing their duties and also concerned about the level of membership or decline in membership if services can't be provided through dispatch.
Thank you. Thank you.
The fourth letter is from the FOP Lodge Number 97. The purpose of the, the purpose of the letter is to inform council that the union is in full support of the chief's desire to maintain current dispatch operations in-house. Members of the FOP Lodge Number 97 strongly believe in the city of Leadville, its citizens, businesses, employees, and overall health as a sustainable small city that some would argue is being one of the best places in the country to live and raise a family. For those reasons and more, they feel compelled to oppose any measure that would jeopardize the safety of those who so strongly strive to protect. And they're offering the following reasons: community relations, safety, operations, auxiliary police, and financial.
Thank you. Gary, your energy report?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just have a few items today. First is just a reminder that the city cleanup day is May 15th from 8:00 AM to noon at the City Public Works Garage, 1340 South Cottage Street. There is a charge of $10 per vehicle and proof of residency will be required. I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that, it's coming up next month. So hopefully we see a pretty busy day. The second one, Liberty Street Bridge over at North Street, where Mill Run, Kerry's Mill Run under Liberty Street was completed and opened on Friday. It was completed a week ahead of schedule. So that was a good project for us. It's back open, unobstructed. Third, just this week, staff interviewed and selected a new Vista, a volunteer in support to... America, thank you. This will essentially operate as an intern for the city who will carry out or attempt to carry out many of the PEL, the Strategic Management Planning Program report recommendations to help lead that effort, to take that a little bit off of staff. So they'll work under, she'll work under my supervision. Her name is Rena Robleski. She's actually going to graduate from Alagany here in another month or so. We expect her to start around July. The next step in that process is actually a memorandum of agreement, I believe it is, with the Vista Group that would basically set out the expectations. The city's risk, or not risk, the city's part in this is a payment of $4,500 a year. We're hoping it's up to a three-year commitment. And we're hoping she's going to get an awful lot done. She's very bright, very energetic. She's already had experience in municipal government. It's really exciting to find someone who has this kind of match, this skill set that she, of the past experience that she's had. It's very exciting. And the fourth item I have is, it's that time of year again with garage sales and yard sales, house washing, power washing, all kinds of services out there. Just want to remind everyone that those types of signs cannot be posted to utility poles. We see an awful lot of them attached. That is not permitted in the city, so we will take those down when we see them. And I just want to remind anyone not to place those on utility poles if they can help it. It's just, it's not good in general and it's illegal under the zoning ordinance. So with that, I turn that back to you.
I also want to point out about putting literature on people's homes when they're not at home. That is not legal in the city under our ordinance.
That's correct. I believe you need to be, is it a solicitor, Katie? So you'll need to obtain a solicitor's license if you wanted to hand out anything door-to-door in the city. Can't just go and put things in people's doors or visit people door-to-door without a license from the city. So you contact City Hall to get that type of license.
Does that include people running for office?
Yes.
Same about putting pictures of your lost pet up. I mean, we want you to find your pet, but putting them on phone poles and then they stay there for months and months and months and they get shredded up and become litter on the streets.
That's correct.
So there are ordinances in place. And if you're not familiar with that, you might want to research it. Anything else you have?
No, Your Honor.
Any questions for Gary?
I do, I'm just to understand. So ones that are running for city council or mayor, they have to have a permit to put their signs?
Not signs, but to put anything on someone's home.
Or they go knock on a door and they leave a pamphlet, they have to have a permit?
Yeah, yes.
Do not run the door or just leave the pamphlet?
Katie, what is that?
I believe it's just the leaving of literature that is...
They passed it a long time ago because people were even pizza flyers. Where they hung them on the doors and you'd see them all over the street. Pizza outlet and all over the place.
Any other questions for Gary? Council priorities for 2021, reviewing and moving the 911 dispatch. We have some officers, some individuals here. Let me just check something. Since it's on the agenda, you're welcome to address council. There's a five-minute limit. If you have a group of people and you have one spokesperson, we can extend that a little bit. So under the city priorities, that's first. So if you have something that you'd like to say, please come to the podium, give your name and address.
Your Honor, council, thanks for having us here. There are several members from our union here. Basically, we're here just to, as you guys got our letter, we're here to voice our support that we wish to keep our dispatch operations in-house. We believe it's essential to the community members, the citizens of Leadville, just to make it a safer place for everyone here and a safer place for our officers to work. I think it's essential that we, that we maintain our dispatch in-house. Other than that, that's all I have. Anybody has anything else, they're welcome to...
Can you tell me how many APs are now members? Because we don't always get that number.
I would not have, yeah, I would not have that number. Chiefs would probably be better off to handle that.
I'm sorry.
I believe there's 17 to 18.
17 to 18.
That's all I have.
Any questions? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
For coming down. Any other comments from anyone?
My name's Dane Lang and I have a business in town here. I have Lang Motors. I reviewed this with council a number of years ago. We had the same kind of discussions about changing the dispatch to the 911 center. And I can just tell you, at that time, we all expressed as far as how important it is to continue on with the dispatch center in the police station. I had occasion, just in the last couple of weeks, where I had to call and we needed the police. The police were there within three minutes. Three cars, they took care of the situation. And I was very grateful that we were able to express and tell what we needed. And I think if it was just dependent on the 911 center, I wouldn't have gotten that kind of response. So I would hope that you would seriously consider keeping things as they stand because it is important to the downtown businesses. And that's basically all I have.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dane.
Sergeant Kip, Sergeant Andrew Kip, the New York City Police Department. So we have the vice president of the lodge. We understand that handling, balancing a budget for a city, I think that last I saw it, it was about $9 million or whatever. Balancing that budget is definitely difficult. Our concerns with switching aren't that we think we need it, so we need to spend the money on us. They're based on promises made to the community. They have cameras on the diamond, cameras on the parking garage, now cameras on parking spots we just accepted money for from women's services in the back of the building. I agree, the response times would likely go up because we'd be handling more calls, civil calls, et cetera. It is, the promises to the community that would be taken back for the, however much money was spent on the camera systems, on every, on every important landmark in the city, I think would be a detriment worth considering. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you. Thank you all for being here, giving us your opinion. Reviewing the marketing of 984 Water Street. Still in the process?
It is. Yes, we're, we will have an agreement with the marketing firm. I'm sorry, later on in the agenda, your new business, so.
Home rule charter process? I made a comment that I'd like to try to get a meeting together with Brad Rowe and have a discussion with him. Maybe we can get that set up with his schedule and council. And focusing on the countywide reassessment. I understand the commissioners got that survey, newer survey. My impression of it anyway, so I know that they said they were going to be working on that. Council subcommittees, anybody have any comments that I can make on this council?
I don't know at the right time, but I think regarding what we've gone over so far, I think it's time that we suggest a town hall meeting. A lot of these that we've gone over involve the whole community. Even though it's going to be up to council, I think we should hear and have input from the community, what they feel, what they want, what they don't. And more importantly, to inform them, especially with reassessment. There's a lot of things about that reassessment that people don't know. There's avenues and ways to go about individual homeowners. And I think what we should try and do is set up a meeting with commissioners. Again, publicly have a town hall of commissioners as far as for reassessment. And I think we, again, should have Brad row in as well. And our representative, our state and local representatives starting to come to these meetings that are issues that are concerning the whole entirety of Leadville, not just a particular area. Reassessment, property taxes. I think they need to be involved and hear how concerned our residents are. And I would like the city council to consider coming up with the time to have, give people time to get input.
Gary, or Larry, are you looking at the individuals or all of them together?
I think it, I think it would be more appropriate to have them all together so people can ask them, you know, these questions and...
Because you're looking, you know, a number of things in one evening. And I didn't know if that would be too much information.
Maybe we need to meet with them, but I feel, particularly we may have to decide on, but I feel that it's time that we start letting and getting input from our residents on these issues.
Counsel?
Yeah, I mean, I certainly, I would be theoretically in favor for town hall meetings. I think maybe a series that we could think about designing, right, in a way that is effective and maybe like, you know, brings people out to learn or share on something that is of interest to them. I think later we're going to hear a call for something similar for some community forums and, right, I think that there's maybe some tie in there, so I would certainly be in favor of, I would be in favor of maybe a series at least that we give some serious thought to structure it out.
So breaking kind of, my thing was, was upon the agenda, there's so much there that if you talk about the 911, the community may have an hour or so on just that one. So maybe we could break it down.
Right, well, like Autumn said, we could set up different meetings for different subjects. But my main point is saying that it's time that we need to start listening to and giving the residents opportunity to voice their opinions and concerns and ask questions and give them the information on some of the things that we're, especially again with reassessment. Like I said, a lot of people don't understand the process, the pros and cons of it and other alternative things that they can do.
Why don't council meet with staff and put together some kind of a schedule? And we can do that.
Mayor, aren't these the things that the Vista staffer can and should be doing? Because we are so short-handed on administration right now. That we really need someone to come on board like this person and start tackling these kind of projects.
I think that that's a valid point, Jim. And I wonder, right, there's going to be nonboarding time, right? There's a learning curve, there's a period of getting kind of affiliated to the job. And I wonder if we had a schedule set and there was an expectation that they would do the logistics or, you know, the legwork to execute them, if it was after their third date, maybe execute. It's also various factors, so I don't know how much we can stipulate of their job.
So whether the council would discuss it and take a look at it. One thing is our meetings are open to the public. You're welcome to come in, you're welcome to address if you're a resident of the city or a businessperson in the city, you're always welcome to address council. Also, contact us individually. So you can work on that schedule.
Your Honor, can I, can I say something real quick?
Sure.
From a Vista standpoint, of the four, well, the four priorities, one of them, the marketing of 984 is going to go tonight. It's going to, we expect council to vote on putting it out to market. And then the only one that was really on the Vista's radar really would be the home rule process. That's the only thing that they were really researching and pushed forward. Would it, would it be helpful for staff to put together maybe a schedule? Because there's going to have to be a lot of background presented at these so that people understand what reassessment means, what home rule, what any of these mean. So we're going to have to put together some kind of presentation for each of these, put together a schedule and say, you know, maybe this will work maybe once a week or once a month over several months. But there's going to be a lot of background, a lot of legwork to go into this to explain to people why they're there. You know, and to frankly, to advertise it ahead of time to say, this is what this is going to be about. This is what home rule is about. This is what, you know, I guess reassessment is about. You know, to talk about what, what that's about so people understand what they're talking about so they can ask informed questions. So from a planning standpoint, is that what council wants to happen? Is staff, staff put together maybe a schedule with some background information? Because otherwise people won't know what they're coming to ask about.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Thank you.
Thanks.
I guess I would just flag that in my experience, some of the meetings that city and county, like other municipalities or governmental bodies have hosted, like, are very presentation and less info, like, very heavy. And then it doesn't feel like there's an opportunity to weigh in or ask questions because it kind of feels overwhelming. And so I think we could balance that and give people enough. But I, I, for a priority of mine would be for us to listen, right? We don't have, I don't take as much of a chance to do that in lead meetings. And so that's kind of what I would imagine, that's how I would, that's my understanding with town hall is that folks have a chance to share in meetings. So we can like, which also might lessen the load for like, wingmen and, you know, development.
So that would be for dispatch, home rule, and county wide reassessment? Those three topics, is that what I'm hearing?
I'm not sure where council is on the 911 dispatch. Is there more information we need?
I have a lot about it. I didn't know how far we're getting into it. Something you're interested in. Something I, I went back and looked in, 2011, the police department's budget was two and a quarter million. And this last year it was 3.43 million. I don't know how it grew that much in 10 years, but it did. I mean, I'm not prepared to jump into something without the chief of police being on board. It's not my, it's not my expertise. And I would need to have him saying it's something we can do. There's a lot of questions to answer whenever even to do it. And I don't know that the public should be deciding without all of the information that we have. I mean, I have other information that I haven't, I don't know how far we're getting into it. I mean, I would, if thus the chief of police is, it's something we can do, I would be interested in that. And I'm the person that was most interested five years ago. So, but I had the chief and I had a city manager and I, right now, no disrespect, Gary, you're just an interim.
Well, it's like, it's like you said, you, there's a lot of information that you don't know. And I think that's part of the point is to be able to let everybody learn and understand exactly what's going on. As I said before, I, what is the reasoning for wanting to take it away? What is it? I've listened to some of the reasonings not to take it away. My one question was, why can't the two work together, you know, hand in hand? You know, they've, they've both existed. What is it that they can't do or can do that dispatch can't? Is there some way that we can't work a program without? Somewhere along the line, you're going to be losing jobs for somebody. Okay? And then we have to look at budget. You know, we, you have to think about that. I just don't want to tell somebody, no, we're not going to, we're not going to have you here anymore and then give it to the police department or take it from the police department. I think we really need to study and find out, aren't there both ways that they can work together? Because they've been doing it. You know, there's a, like, as you're saying, 911 answers, that's all a clock accounting, but they do answer other calls. So, you know, as far as just saying it's a cut and dry thing, I don't believe it is. I think there's room and area for both, for all of them to work together. You know, I don't know what time of, the day it was that you made your call to the police department, whether 911 was available or not.
It was early afternoon.
Okay. So I, I don't know if it's something that, if their, their department in the evenings that 911 is manned then or whenever, you know, so they're not taken away, like, on the weekends, so they're, so they're not taken away from their patrolling. They also said that they are able to, or they're not able to answer a lot of calls because they're put on hold. Well, maybe there's ways that that could be dealt with, again, without doing completely away with the department. I just feel that there's a way that both entities can work together. And that's something we should explore instead of just saying, no, we're going to do away with one or the other or take one away from the other.
I think what we might need to do, Sean and I have had the experience of going through this 2015, 17.
Five years ago.
Five years ago. The three of you have not had that opportunity. I wanted to make sure that you were able to get the information that you wanted to make a decision. On what level of service do we want to provide to the city? If you do move the 911, you may lose some of the services that our community is used to. So that would be interesting to hear what the community has to say. For an example, if you lock your keys in a car, county 911 is not going to dispatch to have your keys removed. So I think we need to look at, what does the community want as far as a level of service? That's one. Two, how do you, how do you pay for that level of service? Some may think that it's duplication of service. I'm pretty proud of our officers and our dispatch. I've worked with them for many years. And there's behind scenes that we don't see as council members that you face. And I just want to make sure that we all have that opportunity to understand because once you make a move, there's always a recourse and sometimes you can't come back to where you were. So it's, to me, it's a very important thing, not only like saving the $31,000. Are we going to spend more than $31,000 if we have to transport prisoners? I'm very concerned about individuals that may be intoxicated on our streets, causing issues, health reasons for them, safety for the community. So you've got to take all that into effect. What level of service do you want for our community? I certainly don't want to see intoxicated people walking down the Arturo Highway and get hit by a car. And that's just my input. So if you do want to go through that process with the community, which I have no problem with, we can have a town hall meeting just on the 911. Because I'm sure that some of you out there don't even know what services our police officers provide and what we would lose. provide and what we would lose if we didn't have our dispatchers. We talked about the APs. The APs are very important. They save thousands and thousands of dollars for your tax credits in the city, plus provide a very, very good service when you start talking about the Halloween parade and, you know, we have flooding and you have the roads closed, you've got lights down, you have all of that information. You know, they're there as volunteers, they don't get paid a dime for doing this. So, you know, we need to take that in, and I think the citizens need to understand what the APs do provide for us. And they give to the community and ask zero back from it. So I think it's something that, before we rush into making any decision, that everybody has the opportunity to have that information and the community.
Yeah, that's why earlier I said I feel that we need to start having more town halls so these things are presented to the residents and they have an input. And more importantly, they understand whatever decision that is made, that what, why it was made and what information was used to make those decisions.
I know five years ago we went through this, and we rented, we were with the church and we asked the community to come in. Jim, you were not a council that time.
I addressed you then, yes.
And we had the officers come in, we had the city residents come in, and we did have that discussion. So we did, it worked, it gave us the information, it educated them. So I have no problem with doing that as long as council's in agreement that would, you know, I'd like to take the nine one one totally separate from the others and hear what the community has to say and have more input from the officers, that you don't get to see what these men do and women, that we take, you know, they're able to share that information as much as they can. So the more education you get, the better decision you can make.
Sure. I, my, again, my vision for a town hall is one where we can hear the priorities and values of our residents, and from that, right, we might have to make, we might have to structure things a little bit differently. Right now, I feel like we've been kind of given a very like, you know, this is the way it works, and if you take this piece out, then nothing works, right? And I don't, we're, things aren't easy enough for it to be that kind of simple, and we can move some things around and figure out new possibilities, and we don't know, I feel like we don't fully know what all of our options are, or all of the kind of possibilities that we could explore to kind of meet the needs of our residents and also address some of the issues that the officers have brought up that I appreciate and are really valid. But I think that we can work through, and I feel like it's kind of been presented in terms of like an either or, and I would really like to hear from residents, to hear what they value, hear what their priorities are, and then see if we can't get to something that works with, you know, the limited resources that we have, but still like, you know, to the best that we're able, provides those levels of services that we have promised to our community that they expect that they want to be, and we can know what they are if we ask them, right?
So why don't we go ahead and set up a town hall meeting? We'll communicate with staff, put a date and time together. Now, we have to be careful, of course, with the pandemic on the number of people and where we could have it.
Just a suggestion, since we have Andy Walker now at Allegheny and, and actually the president, Hillary, said that she'd be willing to do, you know, to work with us, why not see if we couldn't utilize auditorium there? There's a lot of space.
We can check with the college and see what they're, you know, how they feel.
They don't have anybody up there right now.
I don't, I don't know what they're looking at.
Right now, but we're not talking next week or so, but I'm saying, we could, we could talk with them and find out what their schedule is, or if there's a weekend or something that it's available.
Are you envisioning a town hall with one agenda item instead of a whole panoply?
I think for the nine one one, it's so important of the services that we provide, yes, I think we should have that separate.
All right.
Because then we can focus and hear what the, you know, we're probably not going to say much, like you said, we're going to hear what the public has to say, which these officers are still public, so you're going to have that, that opportunity, and maybe it'll be a good thing to have happen with the community. They may ask questions that you can directly answer to some of the residents in the city that don't have those answers. Transparency and open, open meeting. So it can be a good thing, and, but I don't want to put this off too long because we've got a budget we have to look at also in October. So I kind of like to see where we're going to be. So within the next thirty days, or, I mean, I don't know what council's schedule is and staff, so.
Maybe by the next meeting, we can see a drafted, kind of a drafted layout, a schedule of town hall meetings.
And then we got to look at.
The reassessment, I would, if you did it, I'd like to see county commissioner, at least somebody representing them, because it's really not on us. We can ask them what we want, and they can do it, and unless we sue them, I don't think we can trust them to do it.
I don't think we'll even have to go that route, but I think if you invite, they're not going to, it's not going to, like we're telling in their job, we're not insinuating that they have to be here, I think they would be willing to come because I, from speaking and listening to them, they want people to understand, and us to understand, that reassessment does have its good parts and it also has its bad parts, and also who is going to benefit and who is not going to benefit. So I think they would definitely be willing, and again, I don't think it should be.
Well, we can invite them.
Yeah, so maybe.
If we could.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, and invite them, and I just feel confident that they would want to be there.
So maybe as, as part of that, you know, drafted schedule that we look at next time is a list of people that, you know, we think we would like to invite, we prioritize that they're at that community, we can see it in front of us and discuss it next time.
Because we are doing pretty good on, on our priorities, we kept care of the third park building, so, and we're going to be taking care of the nine eighty-four water street tonight. So we're progressing in the priorities, so I just want to make sure that we get the nine one one opportunity, especially the three of you, and I keep saying that because I've lived through it, I, you know, I want you to get the information. So if we can do that, we'll have it ready for the next meeting. So maybe we can just, we can look at some dates, looks good for everyone. All right, thanks. Any other comments or questions on the priorities? Okay, thank you. Council Subcommittee, this was on the agenda prior to the pandemic, since we're meeting in person, I asked this to be put back on the agenda. And what it is, it's a number of different authorities that we appoint. Always like to get updates, they're welcome to come and give us an update on, on the authority. There's a redevelopment authority, the recreation subcommittee, parking subcommittee, beautification, French Creek Council Governments, tax exempt subcommittees, and NAACP, which we're going to be speaking on tonight. So I think we'll just go ahead and jump right to NAACP because the rest of these, I don't see any members here that, unless there's a member that wants something to add.
Well, I'm on the redevelopment authority, but I wasn't prepared to give any presentation because I didn't know there was going to be a subcommittee that was going to be on the agenda.
Yeah, well, the subcommittees are councils, so on that, I think Larry, you and I are on the subcommittee, correct? We have nothing to report, I haven't been to a meeting because of the COVID and our work.
Yeah, okay, so I'd say it'd be great to see you at a meeting.
Yeah. Okay, but we do get updates from the chairman. Same with recreation, so.
Well, I went to the French Creek Council Governments.
You want to do a report then?
Yeah.
All right, good.
Uh, we're still working on a tire committee, and I suggested maybe we could use some of our COVID money for it. I don't think it's that ridiculous, and maybe we could get it from the county, or do it from the city, or parts of it, it's really not that much money, and, but that would be not just, it would be a tire collection, uh, be next spring. So plenty of time to work it out, and it's just something I was, I'm still interested in, and I just, I hate to see them pulling all their tires out of French Creek every year, and they do, and I just, anyone can keep from getting in there as an improvement. And it's the same committee, the French Creek Council, and they worked on, on what they really, going together to do roads and use equipment together and stuff, it's really just a chance to talk about it.
They do that online if they do it.
There was actually, one person was online, it was Joe.
Where were we talking about?
Uh, Council Governments.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, he was there online, and then they were filming it.
Beautification Committee, do you have anything with that?
Uh, no, we couldn't meet this month, considering potentially organizing a glass recycling pop-up, maybe to document a clean up day, but much to be discussed there.
Parking, you're on that also, you and Larry, correct?
Something we could.
I did get some phone calls over the last few days about parking, and I've given it to Gary, some construction questions, parking meters and bags. Maybe you guys could have a subcommittee meeting with them. Gary, you can probably fill them in on the information that I've been giving them.
Sure.
Again, these, these have not been on the agenda because of.
Who do you want us to meet, you're already?
Uh, Gary will get you the information for the parking committee, with some contractors and things, they have some ideas. Tax exempt, I'm not sure who else is on the tax exempt.
I think Sean and I are on that. Nothing to report.
Okay. I know it's kind of hitting you in the left field tonight, but this will be on the agenda from now on, so if you do have committee meetings, you can do a report, or you can ask the chairman of that committee to come and speak. So let's go ahead and jump to the NAACP. Sam, I think you wanted to speak with us, or?
I am.
Gary or Sam?
Well, as you know, it was, I believe it was June of last year that NAACP met and also met with the chief of police and with us to set up a group to discuss the policing of, or police department, their, their policies as to how they handle different situations. They also were concerned about their being out, their involvement in the community, being more part of the community, and just reaching out, and also how they could come together and talk with different people, different committees. But Sam, I believe Marcia or Maria, someone, Sam would be willing to go into more detail exactly what they want to do.
My name is Sam Byrd, I live at six thirty-six Washington Street in Hurley City. Currently, I am the vice president of the Meadville chapter of NAACP, number twenty-two seventy-three, seventy-one. I bring you greetings from our chapter. Our president, Pastor Cameron Bowman Senior, is unable to be here. He's currently on his wedding anniversary trip, which is immensely more important than anything we have to say tonight. So he sends his regards. George Perry Floyd. Say his name.
George Perry.
George Perry Floyd. Born October fourteenth, nineteen seventy-three, he was murdered May fifteenth, May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. Unfortunately, that just happened to be my birthday. We were having a celebration before he met his demise, but it's a day that I will remember for the rest of my life. His daughter, Gianna Floyd, made a statement. My daddy's going to change the world. I believe she's correct. The political action committee met, as Brother Larry said, back in June and began talks with the city police, the city manager, and a couple of councilwomen, amen. We had conversations to get ahead of what could potentially be another Wisconsin incident in the city of Meadville. Our aim and goal is to prevent that from happening by addressing it before it occurs and those things that will generate that kind of interaction with police. I don't personally believe that that could happen in the city of Meadville with the current force that we have, but I don't know. I don't know of a policeman that patrols our streets, which is something I think we should change in terms of the community knowing who it is that polices them, what they are like, where they come from, who they are. Are they from our community? We need to know those kinds of things. I want to quote something that the mayor just said, the more information you have, the better decision you can make. We want to get to a place where we are informed about the policing policies of the police department in our city, and so how we know we need to act, interact with it. I attended a training that the Pennsylvania State Police provides to municipal police. It was a use of force training. After having sat through that training for a number of hours, I left that training with a better understanding of what policemen do when they interact with the community. Now, I would say from that, I left that meeting, that training, more concerned about interaction between police and community than I went in there, based on the things that they shared with the police that were there. I have a concern, but I think that more public needs to know how to interact with our community police so we do not have a George Perry Floyd incident in Meadville, Pennsylvania. I think it's very important. I'm hopeful that we continue the talks that we've begun so that we can reach a place where we can share what our concerns are with the community, and the police can share their concerns with us as well. And to that, I will yield the floor to our secretary of the PAC committee, Marcia.
Hi, my name is Marcia Metcalf, and I'm on the political action committee of the NAACP. First of all, I want to thank the city for responding to the request that was made by the president of the NAACP to put this committee together. I think it's to the city's credit, and I think it's unusual that cities are stepping up in advance, and as Sam said, trying to prevent something like this and strengthen the relationship between police and, and community. You have a report out from our committee, all the council people, I think, received it. This is the product of our discussions over the last six to eight months. We don't anticipate the process stopping, but we're here tonight to really get your input and answer your questions about the things that have come out of this. It's really easy, there are six areas that are out of discussion. We started with a much longer list of concerns, and we were able to resolve a lot of them simply by learning, but there are some things that we think really need to be addressed, and we want to continue to work with you to do that. The first is hiring. There is not a single minority on the, on the Meadville police force at this point in time, women or persons of color. We would urge council at the first available opportunity to correct that situation. Only when we have people who come together with different backgrounds and life experiences that we can make the kinds of changes in culture and attitude. Training, we have been, you may know that the state of Pennsylvania now requires police officers to be trained in trauma awareness, as well as dealing with people from different backgrounds and life experiences, as well as de-escalation of force. That's coming from the Municipal Police Officers Association, but not till twenty-twenty-two. We have resources in this community that we've offered up to help with some of this training, no cost to the city. We need a commitment from the city to move forward before we invest additional effort in putting this, these materials together. We've also talked about better integration between the police and the mental health services, and I think this relates to the dispatch, whether using the city or nine one one. We need to make sure that we have an integrated response. A lot of the incidents, and by the way, since, since you mentioned the George Floyd trial, on the average of three people a day have been killed with police encounters since testimony started on that trial. This can happen here. Many of those people are in psychiatric emergency situations. Many of those people are in psychiatric emergency situations. It takes more than police to respond to them. We need to find ways to coordinate mental health services and police. Incident reporting and review. Up until we started these discussions, we didn't know that there was actually a process for reporting incidents to the police. If you're in the community, you disagree, you can bring it forward in a formal process. That needs to get out to the community. But also, the way it stands right now, it's police reviewing police. The complaint goes to the assistant, it goes to the chief, and then it finally goes to the district attorney. We're urging the city to look at other models, to introduce other perspectives, other people into the process so that we don't just have criminal justice reviewing itself. Data sharing. There is data that Chief Totten has, produces from the police information system. He's been, he has agreed to make that available on a regular basis. And to also help us tie it together with the Pennsylvania Uniform Prime Reporting Data System. But that's got to go up on the city website. We need to put it somewhere so people can see it, just all in the interest of transparency. And the final thing is a town hall meeting. So we can add that maybe to the agenda for what you're talking about with getting this together. We really need to have an opportunity for the community to have dialogue with the police, to be able to get their questions answered, for them to become acquainted with the policies and the procedures in much the same way this committee's been able to do over the last eight months. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on our discussion or any of the things that have come out of that discussion. And once again, I applaud you for the effort to be proactive in this. If anyone thinks this can't happen in Meadville, they're wrong. And this is not a guarantee that it won't happen, but maybe, just maybe, it can help us move in the direction of a community that keeps everybody safe and a community which really looks to their police force as public safety resource in the community.
Marcia, if you don't mind, how often do you guys get to meet?
We're meeting about, well, we met four times from June to December, so about every month and a half, and then we had a hiatus. Unfortunately, our president's family got sick with COVID, and so we had a little bit of a gap there. But I would imagine that we'll go back to that kind of schedule every month and a half. I mean, we allow enough time for work to happen in between.
It sounds like the communication between you and our officers or the FOP is in good shape then, I mean...
We've been meeting with Chief Totten, and yes, it's been, it's been good. Has it been attending and participating and...
Other than a town meeting, is there anything immediately that staff needs to work with, with our officers?
You know, Sam, go ahead. The training, for sure. I mean, I think we need to know whether there's real interest and support for the training. There are resources available. In fact, resources from local folks who have been doing trauma training, trained, I don't know, Lee, how many people have we trained? 3500?
Oh yeah, more than that.
Yeah, so, you know, they have the resources in-house. Plus, we have been offered the assistance from Robert Reet, who's in the, who's an assistant attorney general of the state of Pennsylvania, who will come in and actually help us with the training. So, and he does police trainings all over the state.
And this is in addition to Act 220?
This was, this is addition...
Is this part of Act 220 when you guys get through Act 120? I can't remember the, I've been out of it for quite a long time.
This is a trauma and form training that right now is not part of what's so far to, uh, police, I think will be, I don't know, how this falls.
So it's not even part of the training?
I think she, she mentioned it would take place in 2022, but it wouldn't take place this year, if I was correct.
It's required by law now for police officers, for all municipal police officers to get the training, but if we're waiting for the municipal police officers, they can't do it until 2022. That was the last thing I was told, is in terms of their, their severance change.
Is there any training for sensitivity training?
Sorry?
Sensitivity training for police officers?
The state, the new state law does require that officers receive training in cultural differences and interpreting those. Locally, that isn't what we would be offering.
But it sounds like you guys are going to be meeting again.
Yes.
We looked at the town hall meeting, they can certainly add that. Again, any information that we can share back and forth is always helpful.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Yeah, I mean, I would just say that the, so members of the committee have put a lot of time and effort into kind of getting the infrastructure set and ready for these trainings, but I think to Marcia's point, right, they're not going to continue doing that, right, if there's not a commitment from the, from the city. And so I think, my understanding is that's what...
You know, I would, I would like to say, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was just going to say, so like, how, how would we want to go about making that decision? Would we want to see, I don't know, would we want to see something about those trainings and, right, like, what, 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 how would we move in kind of either voicing support or dissent?
I'd like to say, I mean, I've been out of law enforcement for a few years now, so I'd like to see some of the training that's available. I'm just wondering with, because we have a union that are, you've got to go through the proper procedures, I would assume, with, do we have to negotiate that with the union, or is that something that...
I don't think so.
I'm just curious on that, I'm not sure what kind of contract or...
I would have a contract, yeah, I don't, off the top of my head, I would not, I don't know.
We had a discussion with Chief Totten. I don't think that was an issue that he brought up in terms of having to negotiate that kind of training through the contract with the city.
So what we need is something from Chief Totten.
Yeah.
To us, summarizing the benefits of this training and the mechanics of how to go about it.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see it myself, you know, just the changes that have been made over the years.
I, I mean, I don't, okay. I, I don't, I don't know if Chief Totten, right, like, is going to present us with, you know, a proposal. I mean, you know, I don't know where the directive comes from, right? If it comes from Chief Totten or if it comes from us. It's been on Chief Totten's table for several months.
Many people don't realize, so I'm going to take a few minutes to explain this, that council members have two employees that answer to council, that we actually oversee. Our solicitor and our intern city manager. Those are the only two employees that council has. In normal procedures, we would probably turn it over to the city manager, asking him to bring the information back to us from Chief Totten so we don't have a direct contact keeping us out of, just keeping us open and safe. So I think we should follow that procedure. I, I think it's great, I'd like to personally see it, but I think I'm going to ask the city manager to provide that information from Chief Totten and back with a recommendation to council. That way, we're not overstepping our intern city manager's position. Sam, you were on council, you understand what I'm saying with this. So we have the interest in it, but I think we just need to go through the proper procedures. Would you recommend that as our solicitor?
Yes, and I think we could get that on the agenda for the next meeting, to ensure that inaction actually occurs. But I am concerned that the directive goes from council directly to the department. I think we need to have some inner workings happen there. So I agree on...
If you could prepare that for council for our next meeting, then we can share that information. I just want to make sure we go through the proper procedures, that we're not going to step into something we don't need to. Is that okay with council? We'll have it at our next meeting now?
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't, I wasn't maybe saying directive was the right choice of, choice of words, right, not telling, yeah, not a... It wasn't so much about us giving directives directly to Chief Totten, but rather like where the will is coming from, you know, I don't, I don't...
Sounds like there's an interest in council, from council, exploring that, so we'll, I'll speak with the chief and see what his recommendations and thoughts are and how it could be made, how could be implemented possible.
Great, thank you, thank you. Any other questions from council? Sam and everyone, thank you for taking the time and, and meeting. Again, the more information we have, the better decisions that we're making. We don't want to be, we want to be Meadville where we can walk down the street, our officers are there, we have communication with them. I mean, that's what legal was founded for. I mean, you know, we grew up in a different age and we're seeing changes, but you have to also be involved in them, so.
You know, I would say that I, personally, I would like to see it at some of these meetings if any of the officers want to come. Number one, you know, you guys got a tough job. I couldn't imagine doing it. And I applaud you for being out there. It's one heck of a job you guys do. And unfortunately, the community, a lot of the community has a negative outlook at you because the only time they see you is when they're in trouble, but it's your fault. So, you know, in good faith and also for learning and changing the environment of our town, I would encourage you to attend and give input also. We're not out there on those calls. We don't know what you face, what you hear, you know, what's thrown at you, what you're hit with, you know? And that could help us, you know, alleviate some of the stigma that people have by people understanding what you go through and then, you know, dispelling some of the lies that have been, that have been put out there. And I'm going to be on there a lot, you know? So I would, I would appreciate and think it would be a great thing, you know, if you guys would participate and just, you know, show that you're not just a bad, you know, strong bad guy, you know?
But also make sure you follow the guidelines of our contracts with the city managers, please. Okay, any other questions? Okay, again, thanks you guys for taking the time and effort and the information. Really looking forward to seeing some of that information. Old business authority boards and commissions, we kind of covered that already. So... Katie, we have an ordinance. Third and final reading, property maintenance code.
An ordinance of the city of Meadville, Craftford County, Pennsylvania, amending Part 17, Property Maintenance Code of the Meadville Municipal Code for Enforcement.
Motion, please. Second, second, discussion, Gary?
Sure, those are the changes to the property maintenance code that we've talked about over the last several months. Had first and second reading at the last meeting, there are no changes proposed from those readings.
So when we do the third and final reading, is it 30 days before it goes into effect?
21 days.
21 days? Okay, because I do see some people still having a plastic on their residence, and I want to make sure that we give them the ability to, we're not going to go and cite them, but give them to see that, okay. Any other questions from council?
Is this going to be posted on our website or how?
It's, all of our ordinances are codified online, codified once a year, I believe. Or is it, will this be right on?
It won't be up right away. There's, there's an outside company that does our online codification for us, so it'll have to be sent to them and they'll have a process. But I would say within a month, it should be up there.
Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call?
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Ordinance, third and final reading, amending the market authorities, articles and corporation.
Katie?
An ordinance of the city of Meadville, Craftford County, Pennsylvania, amending Article 171, Authorities of the Meadville Municipal Code to extend the existence of the Meadville Market Authority for a period of 50 years.
Second?
Second.
Sure, again, this is an ordinance formalizing a resolution made by council some months ago, extending the life of the market house. Council wanted to formalize it in the format of ordinance, so it's more easily searchable, findable, so it's more official. But as of now, it's already been reported at the state, everything's in favor of the state, everything's official with it. This just reinforces that resolution of council.
Grant, we're okay with that?
Yeah, everything's good with ours.
Any questions?
I have a question, it's not pertaining to this, but just the restaurant at the market, how, who is running that now?
Connet Lake?
Connet Lake Kitchen. And she's from Meadville or Connet Lake?
They have that in Connet Lake, it's Nick and Jenna, I don't know their last names. They had set up in Connet Lake, Jenna is a native, they're looking to move into town and...
And who had it before?
Cindy, Cindy, the market operator.
Any question on the motion? Roll call?
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. We have a resolution authorizing signatures for property maintenance code enforcement agreement.
Katie?
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville authorizing signatures on a property maintenance code enforcement agreement between the city of Meadville and Hayfield Township. Resolved by the council of the city of Meadville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially and the form attached here too, subject to final approval by the city solicitor as in for abiding an effective agreement of the city of Meadville and accord of its terms. And the mayor, comptroller and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement and the manner required by law as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto.
Motion, please. Second, second, discussion, Gary?
Sure, we talked about this at the last meeting or two, essentially just an agreement. We have one with Hayfield Township and then we'll have one with Linesville Borough, and we will follow in this. Essentially, we will perform code enforcement services in those municipalities enforcing the ordinances at an hourly rate plus costs, and that will be performed with our own part-time property maintenance inspectors.
Any other questions for Gary? Roll call?
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Resolution, E, authorizing signatures for the property maintenance code agreement of the city of Meadville and Linesville.
Katie?
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville authorizing signatures on a property maintenance code enforcement agreement between the city of Meadville and Linesville Borough. Resolved by the council of the city of Meadville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached here too, subject to final approval by the city solicitor as in for abiding an effective agreement of the city of Meadville and accord of its terms. And the mayor, comptroller and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement and the manner required by law as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto.
Motion, please. Second?
Second.
Discussion, Gary?
Same as with Hayfield, and we'll be doing, conducting property maintenance enforcement in the borough as well.
Any other questions? Roll call?
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Under new business, we have a discussion extending term of the redevelopment fund, redevelopment fund agreement. Gary?
Sure. You recall, some of you will recall, in 2016, council designated $250,000 from the Long Term Capital Fund to address blight in the city. They essentially set the money aside and put it in the hands, essentially in the hands of the redevelopment authority to identify and take, take action on blight. So whether it's a demolition, acquisition and demolition, or some other action using that, those funds, council set that aside. When they did that, they put a five-year sunset on it, so that's going to be up in June. So what we would need, if council wants to continue that arrangement, it would need to be continued by resolution. There's, actually, it says in the memo before you that there's about 61,000, but I think it's closer to 80,000, Deb, if I'm correct there. A little blinded. Right around 80 or so.
Yeah, right around, yeah, 79, 70, I don't remember exactly.
That's left in that, and the redevelopment authority is formally asking, there's a letter in the, in your packet, formally requesting that that be extended, I would think, for another five years, until that, or until that money's exhausted.
And the council puts more money into it.
Correct.
Something like inter turning motion to extend another five years? So be it, second?
One second, one second. This is just discussion today, you don't have to take action. It was just something, I know council doesn't like to be asked to take action at the same time they're introduced with something. So this is really just a discussion. Is that correct, Katie?
Well, it's on mic, this is a motion.
It's really just discussion on the agenda, so I don't know that we're anticipating action today. We can take, we can... action today. We can take, we can...
There's no resolution prepared, so.
Okay.
Yeah. So we can put it on the agenda for next, next, next meeting if council's amenable to that.
Um, that sounds good.
That sounds good. Can you, Gary or Meadw, does the seventy-nine, is that included? Are there earmarked funds remaining for projects? Are they included enough?
All the other earmarked funds are, have been exhausted. The only pocket that was left was some blight money, and it's been kind of all put together in blight money.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, like the entrepreneurial money, that was all spent. The rent money was mostly spent. So most of that is all gone, except a small pocket that's left.
It would, it would maybe be great as part of, like, considering it next time, if we can see, just like where that has gone, you know. Sure.
Yeah, sure. Any other questions? Okay. Katie, we have a resolution B. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
A resolution of the council of the City of Meaville authorizing submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for the Strategic Management Planning Program Phase Two Grant Program. Resolved by the council of the City of Meaville that whereas the City of Meaville will be undertaking a project under the Strategic Management Planning Program Phase Two funding for website redesign, police citation, e-filing program, and asset management software, and whereas the city wishes to participate in said project, and whereas the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development makes available grants and aid to said projects through the Strategic Management Planning Program. Now therefore be it resolved that interim city manager Gary Johnson is hereby authorized to submit an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Strategic Management Planning Program Phase Two Grant Program in the amount of one hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars, and directed to take all action and to execute any and all appropriate documents associated with the grant application. Be it further resolved that the council of the City of Meaville hereby allocates local resources in the amount of twenty-two thousand two hundred and nine dollars to said project.
No move. Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is just the next step in the stamp program, Strategic Management Planning Program. We identify in that, in that report several priorities that we have. These are three of the priorities that we identified in that, in the plan, in the report. There's, the one is for website upgrades, to make it more accessible, more usable by the public, and to bring it into more compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. The second one is an asset management system slash GIS-based one that both the public works can use to identify and better track assets, whether it's fixed assets, our stormwater system, for example, and identify issues there, down to trucks and other equipment that we have, to track that, the age, when it should be, when it should be replaced, also track work orders in the public works department, so when an issue comes in, they're able to assign it, track it, see where it is, so that we can report then back to the public, someone that had made the report. That's the second part of it. And the third part is actually an e-filing system for police citations that would save a lot of time in the police department when they're going to file citations. Essentially, it's a state program that we would need funding to enter into, and that would be the third section of what we're seeking today. There's a maximum of a two-hundred-thousand-dollar request. We're requesting one hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars roughly. We've also requested a waiver to allow just a ten percent match, which equates to the twenty-two thousand two hundred and nine dollars that we're committing to this project through this. So that's where we are.
Questions for Gary?
Is this, is the phase two funding only available to us once?
That's not clear to me, whether there's like a phase three and a phase four. I think there's additional bites of the apple with additional, as we, as we go through these, we then we go down the list on other priorities, and as we need funding for that, then we can seek additional funding as we move forward.
I think these are logical, these, they make sense. And I also just think, you know, as we consider, it's just top of mind now, as we consider police dispatch and possibly holdings at, right, some of those came out of town, and like, could there be, would it be helpful to have some kind of outside assistance, maybe kind of add staff capacity in thinking about what are we drafting this to look like? And since that wasn't included in the recommendations, I wonder if that might be, again, that's the Latin key button to pass by May or whenever this needs to go. And so I think these are great things to maybe consider those phase three.
Okay.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Gary, real quick, all the signatures online, all that's been taken care of since Meaville?
Yes, Deb has gone through and taken care of it.
Okay. Resolution authorizing signatures, listing contract for nine eighty-four Water Street.
A resolution of the council of the City of Meaville authorizing signatures on a listing contract for nine eighty-four Water Street between the City of Meaville and Alter Real Estate Services. Resolved by the council of the City of Meaville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached here too, subject to final approval by the city solicitor, as in for abiding an effective agreement of the City of Meaville in accord with its terms. And the mayor, controller, and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement and the manner required by law, as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto.
Motion, please. No motion. Second?
I'll second. Okay, Gary?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is to list this building that we're sitting in now for either rental or sale. The agreement's for a year. It's a year agreement, specific broker fees involved, of course, for the broker. And that's pretty much it. I mean, it's been vacant now for, I think, a little over a year, maybe a year and a half. So council makes, needs to make the decision. So looking to enter into this agreement with Altera to see if we can get some interest in sale or lease.
Any questions for Gary?
I think Gary, I was, Gary would be able to have maybe mentioned listing the medical center too, ever.
We did discuss that.
We, council could approve it then with that additional exclusion, if you want to approve it there, and I could go back to Chup and talk to him. I don't recall that.
Yeah, we did. We said the county.
Yeah, I think you just listed it as like, you know, you listed, we should list the major institutional players.
Right, right.
Because it's.
County.
Unlike.
County. Hospital. College. We did.
The college?
Fair enough, the college, but the medical center.
Medical Center.
Legal Medical Center. And it's very subsidiary, because there are a number of them. And all the schools. Right.
Gary, if they wanted to, I don't know if they do, but I just want to know.
So the motion would need to be as amended, adding these additional exclusions.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
We have a resolution authorizing signatures for license agreement for outdoor seating. Katie?
A resolution of the council of the City of Meaville authorizing signatures on a license agreement for outdoor seating between the City of Meaville and Chipper's Pub. Resolved by the council of the City of Meaville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially, and the form attached here too, subject to final approval by the city solicitor, as in for abiding an effective agreement of the City of Meaville in accord with its terms. And the mayor, controller, and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement and the manner required by law, as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto.
Motion, please. Motion. Second?
Second.
Discussion, Gary?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is identical to a license agreement given to Chipper's last year. It's similar to the agreements with Julian's and Jovatory we've approved earlier this year. Essentially allows use of a little, bit of spot in the front and also some spots in Market Alley, which is in the rear of Chipper's, allows them to use for tables and use for their business, essentially. The same hundred-dollar fee and also the same indemnification agreements will be provided, I'm sorry, indemnification insurance will be provided to the city from Chipper's.
And they understand we want to make sure that the alley stays picked up and cleaned up.
Absolutely.
They don't need permission for the front, along with free?
No, they included it on the drawing, just for your clarification, but no, not really.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
A discussion, resolution, authorizing signatures, contract, management search consultant services. Katie?
A resolution of the council of the City of Meaville authorizing signatures on a contract for management search consultant services between the City of Meaville and the Allegheny League of Municipalities. Resolved by the council of the City of Meaville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially, and the form attached here too, subject to final approval by the city solicitor, as in for abiding an effective agreement of the City of Meaville in accord with its terms. And the mayor, controller, and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement in the manner required by law, as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto.
Motion, please.
No move.
Second?
Second.
Gary?
Thank you, Your Honor. This would be a contract with Allegheny League of Municipalities for essentially new city manager recruitment contract, to lead the effort, crafting ads, crafting a vision, outreach, placing those ads, vetting initial applicants for the city manager position. It would be a rate of a hundred dollars per hour, and it's really based on how much, how much the consultant works. We would propose an eight-month contract in the, in the agreement. And this, I'll, I'll speak a little bit to the next item as well. This, this contract will work in tandem with the, with the State Department of Community and Economic Development, who would provide free services to the city, more from like a clerical perspective. They would help actually write the ad, put the ad out there. They help with some of their administrative work. This consultant, ALOM, they would really help with council with crafting that vision of what they want to see in a city manager, as well as actually interviewing candidates. So that's what this, this contract for professional service, again, it would be a hundred dollars an hour with membership in the ALOM for the year, and it would be, again, for eight, eight months in, for duration.
Any questions for Gary?
Just to hear that, we talked earlier about the, that ten percent discount. Do we have to vote on the membership, or make that decision, become a member of ALOM, give that?
I guess you can make that a part of this motion.
Include with it membership and all.
Yeah, yeah. Good idea. Thank you.
It also says in here that they'll give regular reports either orally and writing. I just wonder if we could have those as part of our, like, in writing and start our council session.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Motion to discuss a resolution, letter of intent. Katie?
A resolution of the council of the City of Meaville authorizing signatures on a letter of intent to request technical assistance with city manager candidate search between the City of Meaville and the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, Governor's Center for Local Government Services. Resolved by the council of the City of Meaville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially, and the form attached here too, subject to final approval by the city solicitor, as in for abiding an effective agreement of the City of Meaville in accord with its terms. And the mayor, controller, and the city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement and the manner required by law, as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto.
Motion, please.
No move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Gary?
I spoke a little bit on it. One thing I do want to change on the letter of intent, the letter of intent, this is essentially us requesting DCD for technical assistance. And one thing I do want to change in the letter of intent is I had listed public partners, and it really should be Allegheny League of Municipalities, which is the official organization. I had listed public partners on the letter of intent, so we'll amend that to list Allegheny League of Municipalities. I just want to make sure that's, that's my mistake.
Any other questions for Gary? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Councilmember statements. Autumn, I'll start with you.
Sure. I want to thank the members of NAACP, for coming tonight. I'm excited by the, you know, what that presents in terms of getting community input, and also excited about council's willingness to host a series of kind of community events, town hall forums, so you get close to way in on our priorities. That's exciting to me. Along those lines, last night was the first public session on the Meaville Climate Action Plan. There's three more opportunities for folks to take part in those. May eleventh, we'll be centered around how should Meaville increase energy efficiency and clean energy? June first, how should Meaville expand biking, walking, electric vehicles, and other green mobility options? And then June fifteenth, the proposed, proposed draft of the Climate Action Plan will be presented to the community for review and input. So it's a quick, it's a quick turnaround, but really exciting to see that that committee is moving quickly with the support of the state and with a real eye towards getting community input and involvement and making our community more sustainable.
Are those online, or how do?
Yeah, the last one was strictly virtual. I believe that the next ones, that they'll all be virtual, or at least that there might be a hybrid option, but they'll be made accessible for folks. And the last one was posted on the city Facebook page and the city website, and so I imagine that this thing will happen for the city.
Good. So if you have an interest, you can go to the website and Facebook. Gary? That's it?
I'm not missing one?
Oh, go ahead.
I'll give you more.
We're not used to getting out this soon, so we can take.
I know, you've got hours left in my calendar.
Larry wants to go eat. So Gary, you're next.
I'd like to thank Sam and Marcia for being here and the police that were here. And I'm like Autumn, it was really a good meeting. I feel really positive about the working relationship that's being developed with the police department, NAACP spearheading, and our county, our commissioners here, city council here. It just says, you know, what I've always believed, that people want to see a change in Meaville, and now we're actually taking a step to do it. And I just want to encourage people, you know, become involved. You know, unfortunately, bad things are going to happen, you know. But my biggest fear is that if something does happen, that it gives people a negative outlook on our town. And, you know, we're not responsible for the actions, but if people see that something bad did happen, but the towns do it together, united, and we're not falling to some of these negative connotations that people like to put, you know, we can overcome and we can grow. And that's one of the things I want to see. And I'm thankful that the three groups have come together and are working to keep Meaville a good place, safe place to be. And I'm looking forward to the warm-up. You know, I like snow when it comes in October and November, but I'm ready for, I'm ready for some sunshine.
Thank you, Mayor. As we embark on our search for a city manager, I think there's a few points that really need to be made public at this, at this juncture. We have retained the services of two organizations to assist us in this process. Our goal is to get the very best candidates that we can and to hire the best manager available with resources that we have. With that in mind, the providers of these services have recommended that we go with anonymous submissions. In other words, people will not put their names on a resume. They'll put, they'll be assigned a number. That way, we don't have individuals lobbying administration or members of council for preferential positions or positioning in the process. So if you have interest in the city manager position, wait until the advertisement goes out, submit it through the proper channels. In order to keep everything In order to keep everything on the up and up, it will be screened anonymously, and then, at some point in time, the, the process will begin with interviewing, maybe a couple rounds of interviewing, maybe three rounds of interviewing, we don't know at this point. But I think it's important for the well-being of our city that we get, we get a manager candidate who will help us implement the recommendations in the Strategic Management Planning Report. Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to just urge everybody to get vaccinated, you can just go online on the Medical Center, Legal Medical Center, I believe it's free, I, I, I don't know, I think it's free.
We need to go on the train.
Yes, and it doesn't hurt, but I mean, I've, I've got all my, my kids are being vaccinated and their friends, because I'm really pushing this, I had some friends that are anti-vaxxers who ended up in the hospital for a couple days, and they said they felt they were, they were dying, it just came on so fast, and they caught COVID, and it's just, if you have an opportunity to get the shots, please go do it, I know a lot of people have, I'm assuming, on this panel, I was... The other thing is, is kids are out now, the sun's finally getting nice, today wasn't a nice day, but there are people out walking around, and kids, just slow down, watch for them, everybody's excited that they're finally seem to be coming out of this, and motorcycles, I always, I mean, that, they're always there, and you just don't realize they're there until they're right on you, and, or you're right on them, and I just always, you know, slow down, take your time, and I'm on the Thunder in the City Committee, and I believe we're going to have one, they asked me, and I said that, I said it's, it's going to be up to the city manager, and I said it's still up in the air, they're finalizing it, but it's going to be a one-day event. The fair is going to be pared down, Leroy is on the fair, and it's going to be something, or at least there appears to be something going to happen from the fair, and my other question was second Saturdays, people keep asking me about that.
That will happen.
And that will happen. That has been approved.
That's approved.
And that has been approved, and so, when does that start?
Soon.
Soon? Right now, okay, very good. Okay, it's always falls on the thing that plays, as well as... Uh, that's about it, just please get vaccinated if you need to.
Thanks, Sean, I just want to remind everyone that they're celebrating Arbor Day this Saturday, 24th, I believe it begins at 10 o'clock, Diamond Park.
I believe so, yes.
We've got a number of different activities, make sure you wear your mask, save your six-foot heart, but they have, my understanding, they have it laid out pretty well, and it's going to be great for the kids, so again, that's Arbor Day, the 24th, at 10 a.m. And Sean, with, with the fairgrounds, the reason I say that is, everything is so much up in the air.
I know, it's just, I realize that.
There'll be something at the fairgrounds, but I can, there will be no entertainment in the grounds.
But there will be socks and tie open at the ice cream.
There better be, I need to keep my weight up. So, if you can get out, I want to thank staff also, you guys have done a great job with the changeover, there were a lot of things that, not all council knows, that you had to go through in changing, and appreciate all the time enough that you guys put into it, and Gary, you're doing a, doing a great job, thank you, and the rest of staff. It tripled down, everybody's done their part and really worked hard at it, so each and every one of you deserves, thank you. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
To executive session.
Executive session?
For.
Real estate personnel and pending litigation.
Okay, okay.
Trifecta.
Second, trifecta tonight. Motion, have we get it, roll call.
Donahue.
Aye.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Sterns.
Aye, your turn, thank you.